This meeting of the Somerset Northie Regional High School School Committee. Act six forty, sorry for the delay. Do note that having been posted pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any media. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions may be made whether received or unreceived by those present and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. Do follow those here. Mr. Bensamaker.
Here.
Ms. Guerrero.
Here.
Mr. Mishala.
Present and participating publicly.
Ms. O'Brien.
Here.
Ms. Solomon.
Here.
Ms. Rimasberg, they already is absent this evening. The chair is present also with us this evening Superintendent of School, Mr. Jeffrey Schoonover, Director of Business and Adviser, Mr. Harold Kara, our principal, Dr. Susan Morales-Gerbe, there she is, and our Recording Secretary, Ms. Ronne Carr. And I'll put you stand for the pledge. My pledge, agents, teachers, and I, United States of America, to the Republic, to the citizens, to our nation, to our ground, in the mission, in learning, and justice. Thank you, everyone. The next regularly scheduled meeting, this committee is Wednesday, November sixteenth, six thirty P M. here in the Somerset Northie Regional High School library. The first item on the agenda this evening of the student teaching and learning is the report from Dr. Brosfer of the NIAS, the New England Association of School Economists Report. Good work. Hi, Mr. Mishala.
Do you hear me, Mr. Mishala?
I can't. I was due to come out there.
Hi. So I am here. We have received our decennial report, received it at the end of the summer. And I am happy to report that we have received our accreditation to move forward for the next ten years. We are an accredited high school. We've always been an accredited high school, we still are. So just to start off with, I kind of want to go through like how did we get here, right? See, it was a new process with NIAS that we went through. Two years ago, we went through the collaborative conference where we had to do that was more like the old school self-reflection that had previously occurred with NIAS. So that was when we had to look at all the standards. We had to go through everything and really do a self-assessment of where we stood. And at that point in time, we, as a school, came up with areas that we thought we had to focus on. The NIAS team gave us some feedback on areas that they thought we had to focus on, and that's how we got to our decennial visit that happened last April. So when you read the decennial report, the priority areas are nothing new. We, those were our priority areas when we had our collaborative conference. They came back to specifically look at what had happened since the collaborative conference, where we were, and where, and then to give some recommendations and as to places we could go to continue to move towards achieving our priority areas. So I just, I just want to clarify that because I think sometimes we read the report, if we didn't go back and look at the collaborative report, it's like, oh, like where did this all come from? This was all, we knew what we were going to have to work on, and if you, those of you that were on the committee last year, when I presented the school improvement plan, I presented it as like a three-year plan instead of a one-year plan, and I'll revisit that at the end of this, and kind of that was based on the recommendations that, I'm sorry, the priority areas that we knew we were going to need to work on. And you will see that some of them we've already started to work on. Well, all of them we started to work on in some capacity. We're farther along with some than with others. You know, we also want to be mindful, I think, that COVID hit right after our collaborative conference, so there was a lot that we did, even though we were hybrid and remote and all the things that we worked for the past two and a half years. So that's what we worked. So first of all, we received a lot of positive feedback from the team about, first of all, establishing that vision, the vision of the graduate and the fact that we had really created a collaborative process to create that, the vision. Changing our student of the month to the visionaries of the month, which I know is the next item on the agenda, that we were commended for, grants that we went after, the whole district was commended for obtaining to help students with college and career readiness. We also had some technology grants that we put into place. Making it a priority to increase and strengthen relationships with our businesses, higher ed institutions. We're still in the beginning processes of that, but we, we at least acknowledge that that's something that we need to really have a focus on, and as a school, I think we're committed to that. Using our school-wide rubrics throughout the school, incorporating project-based learning and continuing to look at ways of doing that. I know there was a huge contingency that went up to Masque, and we presented today, and I know that was really successful. That was all commended and was all happening actually last year when this was happening. Implementation of our UBD templates in our department. And focusing on essential learning standards and the way that we wrote our curriculum, our writing of curriculum with work connotations. And then again, these were priority areas that we knew we had to get in our collaborative conference, and they came back in assessment. The written curriculum in a consistent format, so most, if not, well, curriculum is always being written and rewritten, right? Like it's, it's a living document, so it's always going to be revised and, and we had most of the pieces in place, but prior to our visit, depending on what you department you went into, there was a different way to get to the curriculum. It was not easy to read. The math department, the way that their links went to the UBD templates was different than the English department, which was different than the science department. So right off the bat, before they even dived into our UBD templates, it was not consistent, and they wanted a consistent format. They're recommending that we incorporate our vision of the graduate into the curriculum to really make connections to the vision of the graduate. And to make sure that the entire faculty knows all of the curriculum, something that came out, and it, again, it was true, was that our departments knew their own curriculum but didn't necessarily have access to other curricular, curriculum documents, other departments. And when you want to do cross-curriculum learning, it's important that you know what everybody's doing and understanding the curriculum throughout the school. I am happy to, so we knew this was coming, we knew this was coming last April when they, when they left us. So we made a very huge concerted effort with our content coordinators to get this done. This was something that the content coordinators were passionate about finishing. So by November first of 2022, not only will our departments have access to all of our curriculum, but the public will as well. We will be publishing it on our website. Everyone will be able to see our curriculum and our UBD templates. The only difference between what the public will see and what the teachers will have access to is we will remove the hyperlinks that link to assessments and lessons so that, you know, the teachers still have control over that for obvious reasons. What it will look like. So this is the working document. We are not finished with it yet, but this is what it will look like, so there will be a link on our website to this page. And as you can see at the top will be all of our departments. If you click on a department, it will take you to each individual class. It's not live yet, but you will click on the class and you will see, you can see that popping up right now, the UBD templates by unit, and it will all be formatted and consistent across the entire school. So that will be live, one way or the other, November first. So I'm very happy to report that that will, will be done. So that's priority area number one. Priority area number two is to develop the vision of a Blue Raider that includes the attainment of transferable skills, knowledge, understandings, and dispositions necessary for future success, and provide feedback to learners and their families, and each learner's progress in achieving the vision. Again, we're in progress, and this was always kind of a multi-year plan. Last year, it was all about introducing the vision of the graduate, which I think we did a really nice job of, to the point where I joke with Mr. Schoonover that it was part of my evidence for my evaluation, our case rally, it was in every single skip last year of the vision of the graduate and the fact that the kids knew what, what they stood for. We are doing a big push this year in a lot of our curriculum on the digital citizenship because that was one that we received feedback of, like what exactly does that mean? We've addressed that in the Raider blocks, with our freshmen and sophomores. I know we've addressed that in technology classes. We address that quite a bit in the main office, the discipline. We are staying consistent with our student and staff recognition emails, so in October we started that again, again with resiliency. We defined what resiliency was, and we're asking students, asking everybody, I should put in the newsletter, because we've gotten some parents even just recognizing staff or students for resiliency and why, and then the student for the staff member gets an anonymous email with whatever was said about them. I do monitor it to make sure that it's all being nice and appropriate. And I'm, I'll be honest with you, there hasn't been one that wasn't appropriate. The kid, you know, I think, I think some of them like shout-outs a little bit too much, and I have to curb how many shout-outs you actually get, but it's, it's working well. We did do professional development last year with our teachers. We discussing how they embed the vision of the graduate into their instruction and some assessment practices, because some of them took the ball and ran with it, even last year, even though we weren't necessarily focusing last year on how to get it into instruction assessment practices, and people did that anyway. And so we did some recording out in the ways that we could embed, especially every, the resiliency and the independence and the empathy and digital citizenship into instruction and assessment. I think academics is the one we all, we have our head around that one, but how do you do the other ones? And this year, yeah, when we asked our faculty, it's a requirement that all faculty have a student learning goal and a professional practice goal for anybody that needed a professional practice school suggestions, we gave four or five suggestions, one of which was embedding the vision of the graduate into their instruction, and I gave the example here. We wrote the goal for them. I will create and embed a minimum of six lessons that incorporate the characteristics of the vision of the graduate into my classroom over the course of the evaluation cycle. And some teachers did take us up on this, so it'll be interesting to hear the feedback that they give us over the course of the next two weeks. The third priority area was to create formalized opportunities for internships, business partnerships, and dual enrollment at local colleges and universities. We are bringing back our wellness fair this year, which is going to be bigger and better than it was prior to COVID. Mr. Malcone is pretty much done, I think that, that will be coming up soon. We are creating an alumni database slash mentor database for capstone projects that we're going to also put out on our website, a place where alumni or even people in the community can go if they're interested in helping with capstone projects. We're kind of envisioning, kind of like the old newspaper, like the help wanted ads of students being able to go and put up, like this is what I want to do my capstone project on, and then you all as community members can go and read it and be like, oh, my husband does that, and I would love to have him, you know, he would love to help out, or, you know, I, and the fashion design, we have students that are like roaming the country as fashion designers now, and I had no idea, and it's like, how cool is that? They're looking at partnerships. So we will be having a career fair in the spring for the first time in a while, I'm not sure if it's ever been done before, it's like, since I was here, so we will be establishing that. We are going to be coming back to discuss with you some scheduling discussions around tweaking our schedule to actually be able to put internships into our schedule and allowing especially our seniors the opportunities to go and do internships during the school day. And we are piloting capstone courses this year in our science department. Our environmental science class is being run like a capstone class, even though it does not have a capstone distinction yet. And we do have courses that are being recommended for next year around capstone and music, which I'm really excited about. I'll talk more about that when we have the plan all set. You know, the goal is that by the end of next year, we have a capstone course in every single discipline that students can take, and then move into creating a graduation requirement around having a capstone space before you leave. The fourth one is meeting students' career college and social emotional needs through the counseling services in the guidance department. Our guidance department, again, knew that this was a priority area. I know Liz Hassel has been working weekly with them, writing curriculum, because we did not have a guidance curriculum that was formalized and written. That is in the process of being complete. We are making meetings with freshmen and sophomores a priority for the guidance department, so not just getting attention, your junior senior in the guidance department, really making an effort to meet with the freshmen and sophomores, both at the guidance level and also our, our assistant principals as well, are making it a point, Kim did it last year, and Erica's doing it this year as the freshman assistant principal, making sure that they are meeting with every single student just to have, based on, not, so that we don't even look like we're just about disciplining, you know, just making connections with students. And again, we wanted to talk about scheduling changes, going back to these internships, and making college and career readiness a priority in our schedule in the community at Somerset Northie. And then finally, I just wanted to, like, this was the school improvement plan last year. It was a three-year plan as I wrote it, and you can see that it is directly connected to our priority areas because we knew that, again, known for years, this is what our focus needs to be. And our school improvement plan connects directly with that and connects directly with the district strategic plan, which also, I didn't put that up there, I apologize, but the strategic plan also goes right back to our priorities. So the next steps for this is that we need to submit a three- and a six-year report of what they call our progress and planning, describing how we are going about implementing our priority, working on our priority areas. We also would need to report any changes if our foundational elements, which other than the curriculum, when we met all the standards of the foundational elements, if anything were to change or we had a major change, we would have to report that to the US at the, whenever it happened, but I foresee that happening, so. So that's where we're going, and that's where we are. I am presenting it tonight to all of you, and I mean, you all have copies of the report. The teachers will be all getting copies of the report on Friday, and our professional development, half-day next week will be going with this and talking with the teachers. So that's the next slide.
Does anyone have any questions or comments?
Well, I'll just say that I haven't studied every page of that thing yet. I kind of pick over you in its great, great progress, and it will show in most areas. And I think so here, it's really helpful, and you're very touched on, so great job. I think it's fine.
I'm excited. There's a lot of work to do, and I intend to be back here a few more times. You know, we have the budget coming up. I do have some discussions I want to have with all of you about graduation requirements and looking at moving forward into the future with that, connecting up to this as well. So this is, this is, so I'll be back.
I would just add, I think in particular, I think the work that was done on curriculum, I could just look at that and see what a heavy lift that was. That's really impressive, especially, you know, we have departments that are siloed and are sort of, you know, we just teach them, we teach things, we teach them, and sometimes we are a little proprietary of our work. So the extent of it is that it's aligned and transparent and available and, and in in a format that can be accessed by the public, and I haven't seen that, you know, to that, that level of transparency where anyone can see that.
And we hope to be the model because we asked for a model because we were kind of looking into something, and they couldn't really give us a really concrete model, so we're hoping, I'm going to be the model for this because, you know, it was an expectation that Mr. Schoonover said a few years ago, now, he wanted, he expected that the curriculum went online so that the public could access it. And again, I think the way that we had it, it was working for us in departments, but it wasn't working school-wide, and if our goal is to create these internships and, you know, interdisciplinary units and things, people have to know, you know, what, what each other's doing so that we can make connections across the curriculum. So, and the content coordinators, I mean, this was, this was a bear, and they put their heads down and, and got this done, so I, I got, I have to give them a shout-out because they were like, at first they were like, let's just get it done, get it done in two days, and then when they saw the scope of what it was, it was a lot of work, and they, they put in the time and effort because they saw the, the need to get, the way that we need to get this, and I really appreciate that they did.
I think the only other thing I noticed is I noticed that it looks like the report sort of captures the, the great work that's being done sort of like here, right, in-house if you will, and with capstone moving, just all the curriculum. It seems like the moving forward, the connections to out there, right, is sort of where we're going. So the internships, the, I think everyone might have had it, the scheduling, seeing if there's just dual enrollment, these sort of, you know, building in that sort of flexibility and those real-world connections, the kids get to apply what they, what they're clearly learning here before they have to leave, right, to touch drive a lot of that. So I can see that in this, I can see where it's going, and I think that that's, that's impressive, and that, that excites me to, to give especially seniors those opportunities.
To get there though, and again, why I'll be back talking about it, is I think we do need to look at the way that we create our graduation requirements to be a little less stringent so that we can give students the way that they need to be able to take partners' opportunities, because sometimes we're not allowing them to, to take that next step because they have to hit certain things in the schedule, and it, it ties our hands and their hands into things that we could do senior year with internship classes and getting outside of the building. So we have ideas, I just.
But everything has to run all the way there?
Absolutely. There's a lot of things I think we can do. It's just we, we have to get there and.
Well, I think it's great work by everyone involved, and a few of you, so that's a great, great report.
Any other questions or comments?
I just want to say, Dr. Brosfer is giving kudos to everyone else, but she has led this for several years, more than several years. She was before becoming the principal, who were co-chair of the steering the lead, and she's been, she's been leading this now for a long time, and all of this is due her leadership.
I love you.
I do. I don't think I've ever heard that before.
I love you.
Great job.
Thank you.
So speaking of visionaries, the next item on the agenda is the acknowledgement of our September visionaries of the month. So we have Tammy Chen, academic, Michael DuReb, resilient, Alyssa Ferris, academic, Maxwell Finlaw, empathetic, Aheem Marcos, independent, Audrey McCallie, independent, Emma Murphy, resilient, Joseph Ramos, respectful, and Thomas Simons, digital citizen. So congratulations and good work for all of those four. The next item on the agenda and unfinished business is the MAS C, MAS S, Annual Joint Conference Resolutions for Support Amendment or Opposition. So in your folder. So there are. Six. So you all, everyone has access to this. I will just, I'll just read the, the name of the resolution, sort of the rationale. And then we can either take all of them together, if everyone is in support of all, all six, we can do that together. If anyone wants to break off any one of those, we can do that and have a good discussion whether to support amendment or. Or support those amendments. So for the resolutions, the first resolution, number one is regarding sanctuary laws for transgender students. Okay? The rationale is that the 2011 passage of the Act Relative to Gender Identity, brought to Massachusetts commitment to the civil rights of transgender students, laws recently passed or being considered in other states would put into question this protection. And some such laws call for families to be prosecuted for seeking medical treatment for their children, even across state lines. This is a profound violation of the civil rights of these children, and it, and it increases the potential harm both to them and to their families. In response, a number of states are considering so-called sanctuary laws, which would shield families from such prosecution and extend to those children the rights guaranteed to them by Massachusetts law. As of the passage of this resolution, no such bills have been filed in Massachusetts. The legislature must back up the 2011 Act with this further protection. That is the rationale for Resolution One. Resolution Two, to increase the maximum balance allowed by the Special Education Reserve Fund. The rationale for this resolution is that current prices for special education day programs in Massachusetts colonies can cost a district between $50,000 to $70,000 per student, and private provider day programs can cost districts between $70,000 and $100,000 per student. These prices do not include the cost to transport the students to these separate settings, which is part of the overall price and can fluctuate in cost. Private residential special education settings can cost a district between $120,000 and $250,000 per student. Five percent cap would allow for deeper investment of the municipalities on the money toward preventing mid-year budget crises and positioning the school to have the ability to provide an appropriate public education in the least restricted setting to all students. A five percent cap would also allow reserves to grow to a sustainable, sustainable, or sustainable level, which hopefully would not be wiped out by a single year of special education-related expense. The rationale for Resolution Three. Three, membership of the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education. The rationale. The rationale. I will just read, so it says, the, the resolution says that the Massachusetts Association of School Committees calls for the enactment of legislation to repeal the provision of Massachusetts law that prohibits practicing educators and sitting school committee members from serving on the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education. Be it further resolved that the Massachusetts Association of School Committees calls for legislation to reconstitute the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education by including members with expertise as licensed educators and members with expertise in public school governance. Resolution four, preserving local governance of Massachusetts schools. Rationale for that, uh is that therefore be it resolved that the Massachusetts Association of School Committees calls on the Commonwealth of Massachusetts to restore local governance and accountability of Lawrence, Polio, and South Bridge Public Schools no later than July first, twenty twenty-three. And be further resolved that the Massachusetts Association of School Committees calls on the Massachusetts legislature to enact legislation to limit any future state stakeholders to a term of no more than three years. Resolution five, personal financial literacy education. Therefore be it resolved that the MASC filed legislation that would have the effect of ensuring that all students have exposure to personal financial literacy curriculum and ultimately graduate from high school with a lifelong knowledge of how to be fiscally responsible to avoid being deterred by financial woes. This legislation should ensure that students at various levels who benefit from curriculum in Massachusetts public schools, which would include content and personal financial literacy. Because many students and their families today do not plan far enough ahead for college tuition, many students are not able to attend institutions of higher learning or need to drop out due to inadequate funds, this resolution will help ensure that students are knowledgeable of all the best options available to them in order to be fiscally responsible and receive the best advice in attaining their goals by being educated about the best options for paying tuition, use of credit cards, securing personal loans, lending card loans, et cetera. And finally, the last resolution, number six, the establishment of a regional school assessment reserve fund. Therefore be it resolved that the Massachusetts Association of School Committees calls upon the Massachusetts legislature to enact or amend legislation which permits municipalities to establish a regional school assessment reserve fund. Proposed language for the legislation could include to amend Mass General Law Part One Title Seven, Chapter forty, by inserting Section thirteen F as follows. Chapter forty, Section thirteen F Regional School Assessment Reserve Fund for payments toward future regional assessments. Any municipality which accepts this section by a majority vote of the municipality's legislative body may establish an appropriate or transfer money to a reserve fund to be utilized in the upcoming fiscal years to pay for the regional assessment in years when the regional assessment increases by more than thirty-five percent over the previous year's regional assessment. The balance in the reserve fund shall not exceed ten percent of the annual regional assessment of the municipality. Fund shall only be distributed from the reserve funds after a majority vote of the municipality's legislative body in years when the regional assessment is more than three point five percent in order to bring the regional assessment down to no less than two point five percent increase. The municipal treasurer may invest the monies in the manner authorized in Section fifty-four of Chapter forty-four and any interest earned thereon shall be credited to and become part of the fund. Those are the six uh resolutions suggested by uh being put forth by MASC MAS S. And I would entertain a motion to support resolutions one through six or we can debate each one separately. Would you wish to add anything?
I agree with the motion to through six.
Is it a motion to support resolutions one through six or a second? Is that?
Second.
Motion in a second, any discussion? Got it, the resolution.
Can you repeat that one, what's that?
Sorry, but that's my, that's.
Oh, the local government transition four, right. Any other comments or um questions?
I just have a question. On resolution six, is there a typo where the uh in the subtext part of the word says thirty-five percent? Should I be, is that really three point five percent? Because the paragraph below is three point five percent.
Yeah.
And that seems like we would, thirty-five percent.
I can imagine thirty-five, no one would ever be able to utilize that. Okay.
I think you're right.
Alright.
Um yeah, we should move that out. Thirty-five percent, we'd all be in trouble and folks are fun to have with the answer. Yeah, okay, and you can just, the only thing I, this is a minor, I don't love the wording and the rationale of um the financial literacy. I love the idea. I because many students and their families today do not plan far enough ahead, sounds like an admonishment or they're being chastised. And I I sort of don't love the tone of that. I feel like um folks are really hard to manage their finances the best they can. And I and I also think it sort of uh enough, maybe the resolutions replace work, but it doesn't acknowledge the fact that one of the problems is that college tuition has skyrocketed like, I don't know, four hundred percent. And so I don't I don't think that the problem is that parents aren't planning. I don't know how you plan for any dollar bill times four times whatever. But aside, that that aside, um I think the point about ensuring that students get good solid financial literacy is a good one, so. Any other discussion questions? Alright, hearing none. Uh take a vote. All those in favor of supporting all um six?
I'm in here. Sorry, because I'm on remote, we have to do a roll call.
Oh, Mr. Machado, okay. Alright, we'll do a vote call, vote um on supporting resolutions one through six. Mr. Machado.
Aye.
Mr. Fenstermaker.
Aye.
Mr. Bryan.
Aye.
Ms. Solomon.
Aye.
Mr. Barrera.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you. Okay. Next on the agenda, uh we have the rededication of the Raymond McDonald track.
Sure, uh so that is taking place this Friday night, um just before the game, uh the football game at six thirty. This should be taking place just prior to that, six twenty, six twenty-five. Uh be a brief start on the day here on the track, Mr. Alton.
Members of the team, yeah.
Yes. You've been working with Mr. Ray McDonald uh here, uh you've been communicating with each other.
That's a great thing. People organizing, I think that's more overdue and we're happy that that's getting done.
Yes.
Um next on the agenda, the budget and financial, um is an update from the maintenance capital plan and security subcommittee which met earlier today. Mr. Pass.
The uh subcommittee met earlier tonight, um this was meeting this year. And uh we talked a little about the overall process for the goals of the committee. Uh we talked more specifically about um immediate reach for capital replacement values, you know, the social surplus we have from last year's funding, uh continue to work on that, but we get kind of a good outline of what we're going to put down. Our intent is to um in the near term, you know, work on the surplus monies and immediate things, but over time, over the broader plan for maintenance in the manual of our facility.
Does anyone have any questions? Thank you, Mr. Fenstermaker. Next item on the agenda, the budget and financials for Berkeley assessment issue. So we discussed this at our previous meeting, that um exploring the option of refunding uh portion of uh Berkeley's FY twenty-two assessment because we have a surplus and because there was an unintentional underpayment on the Somerset side. It's going to be mista terra, we're working on to making sure that we have the correct formula for determining that as well. I've also reached out to Mr. Larrabee, uh the Berkeley board of directors, former member of this committee um to sort of inform them that we're going down this road and have a conversation with him next week about some uh steps to see that process through. Did you want to add anything to that, Mr. Pass?
No, it's just, it's related to the loss of revenue for the uh contract that we had with the town of Somerset. So the reduction of revenue simulates an inequitable distribution. So this is to address that inequality for the top side, top directly.
I think at the last meeting we discussed, or they could have made it, the approach that we would deal with this for FY twenty-two initially. And then we will sort of see whatever twenty-three, we'll deal with that separately when we um have another sensor and the year financials around. Any questions about that? Um so I think for, the next item is recommendations for the budget surplus. I think that that's probably something we can.
Yeah.
Take take away now.
Yeah, we have to have some expressions.
Right, so that's. So we'll take, we're going to table, do we want to take or? We can say we're leaving. We'll leave that to them. Uh okay, next, under policy updates, we have um policies for second reading, there are several. I would entertain a motion to accept on the second reading the amendments to those policies A through G, I mean, this is something. Okay, so uh on the second reading, it would be non-discrimination, including harassment retaliation, ACJ, ACR, equal employment opportunity, policy G to A, professional staff hiring, policy JCF, and equal education opportunities, policy JV, school choice, policy JFDB, student discipline, policy JIC, and student drafts, policy JIC. Any motion to accept second reading? Your motion is second reading, second. Alright, I will call vote Mr. Derek Machado.
Aye.
Mr. Fenstermaker.
Aye.
Mr. Bryan.
Aye.
Ms. Solomon.
Aye.
Mr. Barrera.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Okay, next on the agenda, topics not anticipated, I had a chair forty-eight hours in advance. Next on the agenda, Somerset and Berkeley pre-created update. Mr. Machado, would you like to provide the Somerset update?
Sure, um at the last meeting, uh the K E P's uh approved the uh grading Washington trip. It's nice to see once again that both uh Somerset and Berkeley are having a dinner together. Uh so it's nice to see that that has continued for a second year. Um we did speak quickly about some school improvement plans. Um we appointed superintendent to the REIT's uh collaborative. Uh we also approved all six uh articles for uh the joint conference. Uh let's see, we also spoke quickly, uh at Monday, actually, I should say, because we opened from public endpoint about the special town articles. Uh at the special town meeting on Monday, uh the town approved uh the K E P level to uh add like additional uh one resource officer. Uh and now the chief and superintendent will be working together to see how the two members, the two SROs will be covering the four schools. Uh we also got the approval to uh do an assessment in our schools and I believe the regional school will be involved as well. Uh but we approved a fifty thousand dollar grant or up to fifty thousand dollars to do the assessment for safety. Uh let's see, we approved some of the ratings, uh some of the uh new pol- some of the policies. And I believe that was it, unless I missed anything, Mrs. Barrera.
We talked about buscombs, but we didn't change anything. That was the only other thing that we talked about.
That was it.
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Machado.
I also have no updates. I was, we had our meeting Monday night and I wasn't able to make it, so I.
I haven't really discussed them with anybody who won't talk about. So all is great. All is good in Berkeley. It's fine. It's good. They're good, yeah.
Okay. Uh okay, next on the agenda, action items for future meetings. We didn't have anything that they would like to add. I think in November we're planning a hundred, a pass update. And I should, it's called a student cheat.
I like that.
Um. And then I think that I would expect that by November we'd also have an update on Berkeley assessment that has more than a surplus, so. Okay, last, please. Last one. Um we have the consent agenda, so I would just uh sort of read the items and then if the members um would like to, if there's anything we'd like to remove and address individually, we can do that. Otherwise, we can go through the entire consent agenda. So the first item in the consent agenda is the acceptance of a donation of three thousand one hundred and twenty-eight dollars in Bayco's bank to Music Department Hawaii trip. Um the second item is the approval of minutes of prior meetings, the open session of September twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two. Can we overlook those items? Can we go, want to remove them? Okay, then I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So.
Motion in a second. Um take a vote, Mr. Machado.
Aye.
Mr. Fenstermaker.
Aye.
Mr. Bryan.
Aye.
Ms. Solomon.
Aye.
Mr. Barrera, and the chair votes aye. Lastly, we have public input. Anyone have any public input?
Madam Chair, I'll just mention one thing. Obviously, um Mr. Barrera won't mention this, but uh well done to her and her committee uh last Sunday, very, very successful parade and also a field, uh you know, throwback to field, the band field show. Uh so uh I know it's a lot of work for the uh friends of the music to put that together, a lot of moving pots, but also a successful ball. Uh also, some of us were there and uh again, it's just great to see all these kids get together and perform and do what they want.
Good job.
Already planned fifty, we scheduled, did our date last night, so.
No days off.
Nope, whoa, fifty's gonna be big, alumni year too.
That's bad.
Fifty years, actually.
And with that, I would entertain a motion for a chair.
No, no, no.
I just want to say forty-five minutes early.
Go second, I promote you, teacher.
Any more motion? Do I have a second? What are your second? Take a vote, Mr. Machado.
Aye.
Mr. Fenstermaker.
Aye.
Mr. Bryan.
Aye.
Ms. Solomon.
Aye.
Mr. Barrera.
Aye.
The chair votes aye.